Being seven o'clock, I'm gonna bring the Dunbarth Selectmen's meeting to order here. Two selectmen present. Justin is no longer a selectman and Dana is absent. He was signed in, I hear, though rightly.
Sworn in.
Sworn in. We have the town administrator here. And Leo Martel is videotaping for the benefit of the public. We'll be on the Dunbarth website as well as YouTube and Linda Nickerson does the downloads.
Thank you, Leo. We don't wanna say thank you enough to you. Thanks for doing this.
Yep, people don't understand that that's all been done for how many years now? Ten years, Leo?
Over ten. I don't even know how many now.
It's been done ever since I've been a selectman.
Yeah, I was recording when Pike and all those guys were select board.
All free of charge.
Yeah, all free of charge.
Thank you.
I'm saving all my time. I'm writing and copying the town.
Okay, Mike, I have some more business.
I can approve the regular minutes of March sixth, twenty twenty five, as amended.
Okay. I'll second Mike's motion. All in favor?
No discussion, then I, all in favor, I say aye.
Aye. There you go, Mike.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the non-public minutes of March sixth, twenty twenty five, as amended. At seven twenty, seven fifty one, non-public minutes.
I'll second Mike's motion on those meeting minutes also.
And any of the non-publics be sealed tonight? I don't think so after reviewing them. Dave, what do you think?
Yeah, I don't think so either after reviewing them. I think they're generic enough to keep them from being sealed like we had said in our previous meeting.
Okay, and lastly, I'll make a motion to approve the eight twenty-two non-public minutes of March sixth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second Mike's motion. All in favor?
Aye.
I wanna make sure we made the overall motion on the seven fifty-one as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I was thinking the same thing. I might have missed it there, so I was thinking the same thing. It's all good.
Jennifer will pick up on it. Leo, any public comment before we get going in the meeting?
Yeah, I keep forgetting. I'd like to mention. You acknowledge the meetings being posted.
Yeah.
I think you can disregard the YouTube because I think you'd wanna draw their attention to the town website.
Okay.
You know, and it's so easy to do it on the town website.
Right.
So this way here.
Some people have said our town website is higher than Leo's wife's.
So simple, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, it goes easy.
An old man like me can navigate it.
I think I will just say the town website from now on.
Yeah, because hopefully people, more people will go to the town website.
I haven't checked YouTube in ten years, so I don't know if they're.
I never check it anymore either.
Yeah, the link is on the website, so.
Yeah, right, but I mean, it's so easy to do it on the town website and it'll draw more, maybe it'll draw more people to the website to use the website.
Well, you don't have to search for it on the.
Right, exactly. It's just a nice little button.
Good suggestion, good suggestion.
Yeah.
Jennifer, we're in public comment if you have anything for us. Are you on the agenda?
Appointments.
Yes, number three.
Yeah, okay, so we'll wait till you come up then. Thank you. All right, that being said, we took care of public comment and we took care of our business. The new business tonight will review and sign the MS two thirty-two. This is the actual vote of town meeting. It's due twenty days after town meeting for us to sign. How did I get this all out of order already?
Dave, you can't blame me today.
No, I can't. Here we go. Okay. I reviewed this already with Lain in the back, so. Thank you, Lain, for getting that together on time.
I did review it with Dana on Tuesday and he signed the document so that I could get it uploaded timely.
Mike, we're gonna go over the next thing in the generous review and discuss selectmen's other duties and assign.
I'd like to defer the majority of the duties so we have discussion with Dana when we're upon return. However, I'd like to make a motion for his email, but I'd like to make a motion to nominate you, you need your last year as a chair for the upcoming year.
Okay, thank you, Mike. I'll second Mike's motion, so we have an official. And I appreciate that. This is my last year. I'm gonna take a break after this year as well, so. Nice enough for Mike to make me chair the last year here. Then I think Mike will become chair and then maybe Dana on his third year is the normal order we like to keep it in. And Dana did send a note through that.
Right, I was referring to that note.
He was missing the meeting and on respect to chair, either Dave Belt or Mike Kaminsky would gain his vote, so. He was very neutral on it. Thank you, Mike.
And this call for all in favor?
Aye. Mike keeps me on the narrow road on all those things. Make sure I'm forgetting anything as we're going. Okay.
I think the rest of them we can just defer. There's not a nerd shadowing.
No, and I do think there's a few things I will get off the energy committee because Dana is on there as the chair of the committee anyway, so. That would make good sense and I think Mike likes to stay on the place because he's gone through the contracts over the years.
Right, we have upcoming contract and I can make sure that goes smoothly.
So we'll keep some of those things the same and we'll get Dana.
I warned the chief that we'll be dropping his pay this year.
Okay, good.
No, that was to get a smile as the chief watches us.
We have the town clerk here, Jennifer Cormier, for request to sign appointment papers. Oh, boy, gotta make some room for this.
Do you wanna start with the short one?
I guess we will.
Okay, so this is for my deputy Lisa Durant, whose appointment you approved at the last meeting pending the background check.
Does that come through?
Mine colors.
It came through and no issues. Oh, beautiful. I will tell you, it was a pleasure to work with her at the town meeting. Oh, can we make the motion? I'm sorry. I wanna make a motion to appoint Lisa Durant of Dunbarth County Mayor Mac to the position of deputy clerk. And her term is ending March twenty twenty seven. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Now, this is the list of appointment papers for certain of the committees. I believe I've reached out to them all now, but some of them I didn't reach out to until today.
Each of these?
So I have signing papers on each of them.
Oh, you might make an overall.
That would be good, Mike. Okay. Make sure to put the years in, okay, Mike?
Yes, I'd like to make nominations to the social awareness committee. Fred Mullen, term expiring twenty twenty eight. Leon Mullen, term expiring twenty twenty eight. Donna Dunn, term expiring twenty twenty eight. Gail Martel, term expiring twenty twenty eight. And Cindy Pennard as DES liaison, term expiring twenty twenty seven.
Okay, and I'm the selectmen's rep on that one.
You'll be the selectmen's rep?
Yeah. We'll vote again next week, but I will probably retain that. Okay, Mike, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make the following nominations to the planning board. Jeff Crosby, alternate, term expiring twenty twenty eight. Charles Frost, term expiring twenty twenty eight. And Jonathan Labree, term expiring twenty twenty eight. I just wanna make sure I get the pronunciation correct on that.
Labree.
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 Labree, okay, thank you. And then I'd like to make the following nominations to the zoning board of adjustment. Allison Valeras, term expiring twenty twenty eight.
Okay, Mike's made a motion. I'll second the motion for all three of those different committees. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll go ahead and sign these for Jennifer. I'll pass them to you. It only takes two signatures, but if you wanted to, you could have Dana sign it next week as well.
There'll be more next meeting, right?
There will be more.
Yes, yeah, there will be more next meeting. If there's any as where your rep or ex officio that you want to hear for next meeting, I can do that. If not, I'll wait and hear what you decide then and prepare them for the following.
That way, if we change our mind on something, you're not doing it twice. There's the cover sheet for that. Thank you, Jennifer, getting those in time with us.
Just the start.
Yes, just the start.
But one more. This goes with it, I think. Why don't you keep that?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for, I just like the fact that she had, I should mention ahead of time, but she had contacted the chairs and those were always recommended by the chairs too.
Yes.
And so I was, thank you for doing that because we, that's the one, one thing I could see is what's the chairs, should I say, position on these people? I hate to nominate someone and find out the chair doesn't want the person on the committee.
Right, yeah, the only tricky one was not on this list, but all the home day because I'm not, the chair is kind of in flux.
I understood.
Emailed the whole committee and said, who wants to be on it?
Anything else you have for us other than that of this?
No, I just had the appointments and thank you for appointing my deputy Lisa. She was great.
Oh, she seems very good.
Yeah.
I'm very happy to work with her. And we're gonna discuss the town meeting now. I didn't know if you wanted to stay for that, Jennifer. I wanna thank you for your time at the town meeting. It went very smoothly.
Did I understand votes in and votes out checked?
Yes.
That's always, that's always a thumbs up when you get that happening.
The best part is lunch and dinner was perfect. All set up.
Can I ask a question? How'd that voting machine go? Anybody use it?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, probably at least half of them.
I'm gonna quote, we had Peter Week's vote in it. He came out of that, he says, can I do it again?
It was that fun.
It was that fun. He enjoyed doing it. We had to refuse him, but he thought it was very easy and he enjoyed doing it. We put, I think the moderator and I, we just identified, I suggested to moderator, he jumped over that. Putting some people as a test to make sure, make sure it works, so when we had a handicap person, it would be workable. And so we had a few people and no one's complaining about anything. That was kinda cool because it's high technology, so all good.
Right, and just to clarify, it wasn't a, it wasn't a counting machine, it was an accessibility device for voting.
Right.
Right, so just in case there's any, and you might have said voting machine.
I did.
Which isn't incorrect, but some people presume something when you say that term.
And just, Dave, we had a discussion also, how do we handle a blind person? Someone who could not see any device. And so the decision was that would be an election official or maybe a family member could go in there and help the person vote. But I think it'd be probably better if a town official, a voting official.
Aren't they coded with that for the person?
So the device does, it's got a headset where you can listen. And so if they understood how to navigate on the keyboard or I think that, you know, they're not gonna be able to do the touchscreen probably. But there is a keyboard option and you can, I did test with that, not too much, but a little bit when I was doing the testing. And that is navigable, although I was doing it while watching, but it does repeat to you what your selection is.
Maybe that should, maybe that should be blindfolded.
As a test, yeah, because I thought it would be helpful that an election official go in with, with, with a blind person. If, but it was a good discussion that John brought up about a blind person.
Exactly, yeah, and it's not a given, but likely they may have a different device next year for that same purpose. Because the state is phasing this out and has been looking at what vendor, et cetera, et cetera. But it's possible to get pushed out a year, but as of December, they were saying they expected we'd be able to be, I think, purchasing them later this year or early next year for moving forward.
And the thing is, if it's a statewide election or national election, they pick up the tab for the printing of the ballots.
Right.
And the only time we pick up the tab is when it's a purely local election.
Leo, you had a question?
A remark. Dave, you were wrong probably, but way back in the day, Beryl Wetherby used to vote. She was blind. Now, I don't recall how it worked, how she did it, but she came to every meeting and every election and she voted. And she was in her nineties, I believe.
Outstanding. We had a few people who just had trouble getting to the, into the building, but they came, they said, I gotta vote.
Yeah, good.
So more power to those handicap folks who come out and do it.
Yep. So other than that, the town meeting, I thought, went very smoothly and I think the presentations went well. I think that the, having that up on the screen was ideal to have that up there and have it highlighted like you did. And being able to point to it, I think it saves so many questions.
Going forward in the future, I'll make sure I work with the PowerPoint because that would have been preferred. Because then you would have the remote that controls and you can move it back and forth without.
I will tell you that their laser.
Yeah.
I had to be like within five feet of it, so it really doesn't work, but Mike's laser worked perfect.
Really? Let's get the brand of it. Maybe we just invest in it.
You can't buy it in the United States.
So there, did you see? I had to get within five feet, then I'm looking up at the board trying to figure out what I'm looking at, so. That, that should be updated, I would think, but I will tell you, if looking at the wires and the microphones and everything the young man had to do.
There's no way I would have.
We should just plan him and pay for him to do it the right way, because it's a lot of work setting it up.
No, you can get some of the nicer green lasers out there and then I think it's always good to have a backup like that.
He took it down, he rolled everything up, he was neat, he was polite, I mean, he did fabulous job. In fact, I think we should send him a letter from the selectmen.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, yeah. And probably invite him back for, we'd like to consider his appointment in the future.
He said he was available.
Okay, but put that in the letter too.
May I comment?
Please.
No.
In addition to everything else that he did that he was on the hook for, right, he also, my laptop, which as you know, is new this year or December-ish. Just for this purpose of town meeting and town elections, the screen rotated. It's not a touchscreen, it's not a flip over, there's like no reason it should ever go rotated, but it rotated to the opposite direction it's supposed to be in on the display. And he fixed it. That was like half an hour before town meeting, so. So on top of everything that he had to do, he saved.
I see, you were running around.
Maybe this, but not that, you know, like, well, don't let me put my geek hat on because I might, you know, let me have somebody who's more.
I will get plans in and some have the thing to rotate it right on, which are easy. And the other ones, I have to look at the plan like this to figure it in the house.
So, yeah. He loved it beyond.
It went very smooth and I thought that it was a well-run town meeting.
Yeah, I think it was, went without a hiccup. But I think it's, it'll get more challenging as we get the more interesting elections aside the surface.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on from there, thank you, Jennifer. We have some unaccepted, or we need to accept some unanticipated revenues. Per RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B Roman numeral three, section B. And the amount of a thousand dollars from Health Trust for wellness for the town employees and the police department. Split them to five hundred each.
Yes, I'll second that. It's gonna be two departments.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So, Lain, if you guys can separate those and use them how you normally do.
Yeah, we've got two separate checks.
For the benefit of the employees, that's great. Going on from there, we've got some, this is the.
That's the wellness.
Yeah, wellness, I'll put that over here. Health trust checks.
Dave, you mentioned something that you wanted to bring up tonight with regarding the land purchase.
Yes. The land purchase, Jacques Belanger, first of all, at the town meeting, we got approved for the land purchase. For two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The warrant was for two hundred and forty-five thousand, giving us ample amount of money to go through the whole planning board process for the property. There will be some that will come out of Lain's process, Lain's side, which I explained to her after I called her. Which would be more like the tax stamps and all the other stuff that like, that is required by her that are split. But the other items that aren't split, I told her we'd go through the whole process. My recommendation, Jacques Belanger already did the plan work for the entire easement on the property. And I think that it'd be wise to give it to him and he did say that he would give the town a break as far as doing the work for us as well, so. It's my suggestion that we make a motion to hire Jacques Belanger to go ahead and get that lock cut off. And I'd like him to be the person presenting it to the planning board for her as well and going through that whole phases.
I think his familiarity with the process is most valuable.
And, and with, you know, her age, if she wants, I'm sure she'll probably wanna come to some of the meetings, but I don't want her to have to present it, you know? I thought that Jacques doing that work would be better.
Yeah, it's up to her. If she wants him, hire him, then she, we don't have any say in it, but.
Well, no, we wanna hire him, but.
For our side.
For our side to present the whole thing to her, you know? She, he's gonna be doing both sides basically when he does a presentation.
Yeah.
So.
Make a motion and we can make it.
Yeah, so make a motion to hire Jacques Belanger to do that work to get that closing ceremony.
I'll second that.
Motion made, so all in favor?
Aye.
Lain, you want me to call Jacques and give him?
Just for the record, there are two, two things going on. We can, gotta call some other people, but he's familiar already with it. And the fact that he's a town resident and he's now.
And it should be under our dollar value, yes. So that being said, the next thing I'd like to go to is a mailbox item on here. Before I go to the mailbox item, I could do it under selectmen's, I'll go right to mailbox items. We have a new date for the flag retirement ceremony in Dunbarth. It's gonna be Saturday, June fourteenth. This is, I think, what the rain day for it, Lain. It's at ten AM.
How appropriate. That's Flag Day, isn't it?
Yeah, the New Hampshire Sons of the American Revolution Honor Guard will be present. Dunbarth American Legion Post one sixteen will be present. Dunbarth Fire and Police Departments, Boys, Girl Scouts, four H and other, any other organization town would like to participate, contact Don Larson. So again, the date will be June fourteenth, ten AM. I'm gonna bring it back one more time for public comment. We've got kind of a short meeting. Anybody in the public?
Yeah, I do. So at the last town meeting.
Leo Martel.
Lee Martel, Ten Hill Road. We voted down Woody's cutter.
Skid steer mower.
Skid steer mower, right, so that problem still remains.
Yeah.
Anybody ever think of maybe just bark mulching all of that?
Yes, in fact, it was brought up by a member of the public during the public hearing. And one of the options would be to level it off, make it look pretty, add the landscaping fabric to stop future growth and then cover it up with rocks or landscapes.
I don't think you need to spend the time leveling it off if you're gonna mulch it.
Yeah, but that was one of the options.
Yeah, but in, you know, the fellow that chips all of our stuff now might be able to get a deal from him. When Asquith comes to town, a lot of times they're looking for a place to dump.
Yeah.
You know, so it doesn't all have to be done at once. You could do half of it, you know, it goes, it's bigger than I thought. I wouldn't measure it the other day. It's way bigger than I thought. So it'll take a bit of mulch.
There is a lot of going around here when you do do the mulch.
But, you know, the thing is, once the mulching is done, there won't be any labor involved. You won't have to buy a machine.
Yeah.
You know, so.
That was the general consensus. I'm gonna look at all options.
Right, in the long term, the town would be saving money, you know?
And that was my concern. But I think, again, there were some other arguments brought up for that one where I think it's worth looking at all arguments.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, just an option. I just thought I'd bring that up, maybe.
And we're gonna, I'm gonna, our new selectman, who's a member of the energy committee.
Right.
It's gonna be, it's gonna probably more likely be one of his projects to help us through.
Yeah, and I've already been down there, but like Mike can go down and talk with Woody about it as well.
Yeah, he's great. You know, somebody can contact the company on Ray Road and see if the.
I do know that like, you know, there was talk about lomings. It's not one load loma, it's probably ten, ten loads of clay to level it up and another ten loads.
Yeah, it's a big area.
And then we have to buy a good mower, because all we have is push mowers, so.
Right, and then, right, and you still got labor involved. Machine and labor, you know? So I thought like in the long run, the town will save money, you know?
Yeah, yeah, this, there are definitely other options that we'll look at.
Yeah, okay.
Throughout the year. We're not in a big rush. I don't think for, we do, we do have the ability to keep D R mowing it as well, so.
Yeah, my concern is, as I expressed, I don't want a rock to hit anything and that's, you know, one rock in one panel, that's a, it's expensive afternoon.
Okay, going on to there, public comment, anybody? No? Jennifer, anything from you?
We've been using the office since that town meeting.
Yeah.
Budget's been posted and applied, so everyone's budget reports are now show funding in those lines. We've, we've just completed the update on the COLA for the town employees. We're working on a retro for hours from January first. And then we also have been working on several items that have deadlines, April first and April fifteenth, so. The elderly exemption application has been updated. Board of assessors adopted it this Tuesday. And making some progress with getting a lot of things updated and finalized, so it feels good.
Now, one question I have for you. How do the elderly know about the exemption? Do they find out when they come to pay their taxes or do most of them get notified somehow or is that?
No, I did, I did put the form up on the town website under the administration tab. We've had two people stop in and ask for them, so one I had to delay until I updated the form and got it adopted. She came by earlier today and picked up the form and then we had a gentleman stop by and grab the form as well. So it would have to be word of mouth, but as soon as we, we hear anyone that comes in that expresses concerns about being able to pay their taxes, that's when we would provide them with a form. And also refer them to the state, there's a state form that they could potentially qualify, even if they don't qualify for the local. That would help in partial payment of their taxes.
Okay, and again, thank you for getting out the two thirty-two on timely basis.
Yeah.
All right. I'm gonna bring it back to the select board. Mike, do you have anything?
Just, I had a meeting with the joint loss committee.
Yeah.
And there are two items on the agenda that are gonna be presented to the board by the outgoing chair of the board, who's Chief Herman Art. One of them is the parking rather than on the corner here. It's a traffic hazard when you have a larger vehicle around the corner route here. And he has some proposals to maybe hack that off or just put compact vehicles, so he's gonna talk about that with the board. He can get the voice blessing before, before he does anything on that. And the last, the second item is, he's looking at some reasonably low-cost options of installing some security cameras around our town buildings. So he's got some great quotes. He's gonna come in and talk about the need, the cost, what would be the incurred cost and whatever, and where we should put them. And it's been, it's been battered back and forth in the joint loss for some time. And I said it's probably best to come to the board, make a presentation, so the whole entire board can hear the entire presentation without it being filtered.
I like the fact that we're looking at it. Is, is that part of joint loss though?
It is, because it's, the thing is, if you think of it, it's also protection for not only after hours, but during the day, if there was an incident, it protects our employees. It talks to joint losses, taking care of employees, protecting them too. So it does fall under the brow, under the brow of joint loss. Just like out here, we don't wanna get lost.
It's been a little while since I've been on joint loss, but is there a purview of what you guys look into?
It's basically the safety of the employees and how we can improve on any.
Cause I know before we always looked at thresholds, walkways.
Yeah.
You know, stuff like.
The parking lot is the big thing, because the thing is, a large vehicle out there, it's a real traffic hazard to all, anyone that's.
A lot of utility companies break that in parking.
But I think what was touched on during joint laws was that if there's an injury or a claim of an injury, the cameras being in place could potentially protect the town and or protect the employee. If there's any type of injury that occurs.
So multiple reasons, theft, injury, after hours.
Okay.
And so the thing is, there are, there are some options he's feeling out. The thing is, the first question was, geez, this sounds awfully expensive. And he said, just contrary to that, it's not. So I said, well, it's worth a presentation to the entire board. And so I asked them to come in probably next week or next, next meeting or two and have a presentation for us.
Yeah, would be great. I'm being on that.
Can I touch on that as well? After this joint loss, we had a small break and then we had a presentation from a company that works with Primex, our property liability insurance. And they presented a cybersecurity PowerPoint presentation. There were, we were, there was a lot of us here. It was very informative, a real eye-opener. They also referred us to the, a link on their website, which I will share with the board. And they said that it is a situation that happened in a local town where they were compromised and. Happened in a local town where they were compromised and had to file a claim and it was a costly claim. And they've asked that they put something together and share with other municipalities to avoid that type of situation that happened in another local government. So it's an hour and a half. I will get you guys the link here as soon as I can, but the, the information, Jennifer was there as well. And I wish you had stayed, but it was very informative and so now that we've gone through that initial training. There's going to be additional steps that we can get involved with and they also include one-on-one. Preparation for like policies that will be very clear and understanding for anyone to read and to be able to give us some guidance as to. If, you know, you get a, an email that sounds like it's a compromise, if you get a phone call that you're not sure if it's the employee, how do you handle these situations? So it's just, I think it's.
Yeah, with all the artificial intelligence that emerging.
They mentioned that quite often. AI was one of the situations that, you know, has really gotten developed and is problematic for everyone, so.
Well, I'm gonna give you a secret password. You give, when I call, when you call me, give me the secret password, I know what you.
Yeah, they gave, they gave us a lot of good tips.
Yeah, no, I said.
Okay, thank you. You're all set, Mike. Okay, bringing it back to me. I was wondering, could you touch base maybe, I think they went to the. Tom Casano's house, the additional chairs upstairs that were not in working order. At one time we were gonna take and what made me think was I'm looking at this chair has one of the slats out of it. We were gonna take the broken ones and we're gonna mix and match to make, maybe take one broken one and make two good ones. And get them back up to the second floor.
I think Mary might know where, where they went, because I thought at one point they were putting the attic upstairs above the.
They were.
They were.
And Mary had nothing to do with it. There's possibility someone went down to the highway department, Conex box. But I'm not sure, but I would definitely like to check with the Casanos, because they had them out here and a tire, and that got wet and they were brought to somebody's garage.
Did it get put into the storage container?
Well, first they went to a garage, so I wanna make sure that we have them all back in one spot, because I would like to try and take. And have a, a local craftsman fix them back up however many we can and put them up there for spares.
Yeah.
Cause they're hundred and thirty-year-old chairs.
I think any of the refinishing would be worthwhile.
They're, they're, they, they oiled the ones up there and they look beautiful. And, but they're, they hold up better than probably anything we could buy today for the amount of use that they've had. And people love the comfort, huh Jennifer? It keeps people moving out of our meeting. So we just check on them.
I will.
Find out where they are and then we'll make a decision as a board whether we have a local craftsman fix them up or don't. They were gonna volunteer to do it, but I'm not sure they have the expertise to do it, because they're pretty well put together and. I don't know, if we need to, if we need to do something with them, I just wanna react before they're lost.
Right, right, okay.
Did the sign of the fire department get any update on that?
No, I did not.
Okay, whenever you get a chance. I know we had a busy week. And that's all I had. Make a motion to adjourn. Seven thirty-three, Mike. Did you second it?
I second it, yes.